Good evening, everybody. This is Rob Johnson with the Spotlight Media Network, coming to you from the Lewisville Middle School as we are here for the 2025 Meet the Candidates for the Lewisville City Schools School Board. And we'll hear from all the different candidates. We have Brian Beatty, and come at Rick Chrislip, Anthony Desiato, Tyler Lab, and come at Brenda Lamaro, Tristan Stutler, and Mike Thomas. So it'll be a good event, a great event, and I'm excited to be here. We'll bring you all the information that you can possibly have, and it's gonna be a great night, so check it out, enjoy the show, and get informed before we get ready to vote. So we'll be getting started here in just a second. As you can see, there's Brian Beatty, Rick Chrislip, Anthony Desiato, and then we've got Tyler Lab, Brenda Ramsey Lamaro, Dr. Brenda Ramsey Lamaro, Tristan Stutler, and Dr. Michael Thomas. So like I said, we'll be getting started here in just a moment, but just want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. And we appreciate you joining us. So this is the Spotlight Media Network, and we've got a nice crowd here, so we'll be getting started in just a moment. Again, in case you're wondering, this is the Meet the Candidates at Lewisville Middle School. We're getting ready to get started. We're just waiting for some folks to get seated, and it is brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Canton.
Kick it off.
Good evening.
How's it going? Fifteen.
Does that work? Okay. Welcome, everyone. We're so happy that you are here tonight. That shows how interested you are in your community and your community's schools. Bravo. My name is Carol Canavan, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Canton area. The moderator for tonight's program is Chris Clevenger, the co-president of the league here in Stark County. Are there any other candidates out here that are running for, I think you have a mayor's race, maybe you have some other kinds of... We are happy that you are here as well, participating and learning more about your school board candidates, so thank you for coming. The organization that we represent has a long history, formed by the suffragists who fought for over seventy years to win the right to vote, for women to vote. Once they won it, they recognized that people need to understand who they're voting for, what they stand for, what the issues are, and to really be informed citizens, informed voters in each election. And so we started doing programs like this, so that you could get to know something about your candidates. And we also do issue forums about issues of importance. Last year, we were very busy doing things about gerrymandering, but oh, well. We believe that voters can make the best decision when they are informed, and we're proud that our league, the second one founded in Ohio, is over a hundred years old, having been founded in 1920, the same year that the Nineteenth Amendment passed. We believe in working to make democracy work. Our purpose, therefore, is to give you, the citizens of Lewisville, and the citizens who send their children to Lewisville City Schools, have this opportunity tonight to hear from your candidates. First, I want to point out that we made an error in our program. Unfortunately, the program we used as our model, you know how cut and paste works, we pasted a wrong statement. And in this kind of a forum, we do not allow you to recognize on your white cards, if you're writing questions, a particular candidate to ask that question of. Each of the candidates will have the opportunity to answer the same questions, and Chris will explain a little bit more about that when she comes up here. Note that no individual candidate can be addressed by specific questions, and as I said, each candidate will respond in turn. The league has been offering candidate forums, meet and greet events, and other educational programs since its inception, and we have created approaches that we believe treat everyone as fairly as possible. So thank you again for coming, and at this point, I will turn it over to Chris.
Welcome. First, I'd like to ask that everyone turn your cellphones off. We aren't able to allow you to take pictures or videos during the event. The League of Women Voters is using Mr. Rob Johnson of Spotlight Media Network. He performs other video operations here with Lewisville City Schools. The recording of this presentation will be as it's streaming live. There won't be any editing. It'll be all the faults, all the positives will be loaded to our website, lvw.org, or our YouTube channel. It'll take a few days for us to get it there. So you may review it there if you like. Encourage any friends who couldn't make the meeting tonight to take a look at one of those places to see the video. We've reserved time for questions and answers after all candidates have made their opening remarks. They each have two minutes to tell you a little bit about themselves and what they stand for. They'll do that from the lectern. Then we'll start asking questions. They'll have one minute each to answer the question. We'll start in alphabetical order. Mr. Beatty will have the first question, and then the second question. We'll start with Mr. Chrislip, and so on and so on, so that every candidate gets a chance to be the first to answer the question. As you came in, or maybe on your seat, there were index cards that are available for you to write questions. Again, as Carol mentioned, we can't specify a certain person to answer. Each candidate will answer your question if it makes it up here. We have Amy and Cynthia to vet the questions, just to make sure that we don't have any duplicates or if any of you write, you know, a bad word or something on your card. Sorry. And so each candidate will have the opportunity to answer a question first, and we'll move to the round at the very end. They'll each have another minute to wrap up remarks. Again, that'll be done from the lectern here. Okay, we're ready to go. Mr. Beatty. The most... Oh, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
First of all, I wanted to say, I should have listened to Mr. Paulie when I was in high school and took speech and debate, but I didn't, so... I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight, Spotlight Media for broadcasting this event, and to everyone who came out. What a great turnout. Your presence shows how much this community cares about our children and our schools. My name is Brian Beatty, and I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe in integrity, transparency, and safety for every student. Every child deserves an education free from fear and full of opportunity. If elected, I will hold our schools to the highest ethical standards and ensure clear, timely communication with parents and the community, and work to create a safe, nurturing environment where every student can learn, grow, and reach their full potential. I look forward to earning your trust and working together for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Chrislip.
I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters. My name is Rick Chrislip. I am sixty-eight years old. I've been in... I've been married for thirty-seven years. I have two daughters. I have a granddaughter. I am a proud graduate of Lewisville High School. I worked here for thirty-five years. I have a master's degree in school administration from Ashland University. I believe our leaders need to be positive role models with honesty and integrity. There's too much negativity in our society today. Make a change in somebody's life. Board members must put our students first. Lewisville students and staff excel in all areas. We excel in academics. We excel in extracurriculars. It's important for people to understand, when it comes to transparency, as a board member, we are only allowed to share so much knowledge and information. This is school law. Loyalty is everything. Respect is earned, not given. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your consideration.
Hello. My name's Anthony Desiato. I'm a graduate of Lewisville from 2002. My wife is also a graduate. We have three children, one at North Nem, one at Lewisville Elementary, and one here at the middle school. The reason I chose to run is because the last couple of years, I've really focused on my kids' sports and not so much on their academics, so that was one of the things that got me interested in running for school board. I believe I'm the only candidate up here that has a school treasurer's license that I... I think it expired back in June, but that means I could be a school treasurer in the state of Ohio. So I also work at Hendrickson Trailer Division in finance. I graduated in 2007 from the University of Akron with a degree in accounting and a degree in finance. The last fifteen years or so, I've worked as a director of finance or a vice president of finance for very different companies. So one of the reasons I think I'd be a good candidate is because I have that background in school finance, which, as you guys know, is one of the key issues probably over the next four years of how the schools are going to be funded. And I've also been a member of the Touchstone Club for several years where I was the treasurer, and I've coached T-ball, Little Leopards, flag football, youth basketball, so I'm very active in the community with my young children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Lab. I was adopted by Bill and Judy Lab in Lewisville, Ohio. I grew up in Lewisville, Ohio. I graduated from Lewisville, Ohio, as well as my wife. My sister... I have a sister that lives in Lewisville, Ohio, as well. I have five kids that attended Lewisville. I have four daughters, one adopted child, and two sons total. We currently have three foster children in our homes as well. I graduated with an Industrial Operations Management degree from Kent State. I have thirty-plus years in industrial operations management. My whole goal in my career is streamlining operations and eliminating waste. I've been the leader of union and non-union associates. I've also implemented the E4 project in our school system in our middle school. I volunteered for Lewisville Football Athletics as far as kicking camps. I lead and coordinate church community Easter egg hunts in Lewisville. I'm also the only one up here with the certified foster parent that I believe. I have over a hundred years of certified parent training, dealing with children who experienced abuse or neglect. We also have been nominated to be mentor parents for foster parents that are getting into foster training. So in November, we start training to be mentor parents. When new parents want to foster children, we're gonna start training them. The reason why I came to be a candidate for the Lewisville School Board is because we had some incidents with my daughters, and they were very personal for me. And at the time, I tried to get questions that we couldn't get in a timely fashion, but as I started to investigating more and more, I found more families had the same stories. So it became less personal as they became more often with stories. So I feel like the auditing and my streamlining and reducing waste is a huge advantage for our school system with the financial challenges ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Brenda Ramsey Lamaro, and I've had the privilege of serving on the Lewisville Board of Education for the past thirteen years. During that time, I've worked faithfully and respectfully with my fellow board members, administrators, and teachers to keep our schools strong and focused on our students. I'm a proud lifelong resident and a graduate of Lewisville High School. I attended the Ohio State University where I earned my Doctor of Veterinary Medicine degree. After graduation, I returned home to Lewisville to open my own veterinary practice. Over the years, I've grown that practice, doubling its size this year, in fact, and I'm proud to employ several Lewisville High School students. As both a business owner and a medical professional, I take accountability for everything that happens in my practice. Every day, I make important, sometimes life and death decisions for pets and their families. I also manage budgets, payroll, and long-term investments, skills that translate directly to my work on the board. I understand fiscal responsibility and the importance of making thoughtful, balanced decisions that ensure stability and sustainability for our schools. Service to this community has always been a priority for me. Before joining the Board of Education, I served as president of Paradise United Church of Christ, and I'm currently active in 4H as a dairy judging team coach and advisory committee member. Those experiences keep me grounded in our community and connected to our youth. Lewisville is my home. It's where I grew up, built a business, raised my family, and found a purpose in giving back. If re-elected, I will continue to lead with integrity, collaboration, and sound fiscal stewardship. Thank you for your continued trust and support.
Good evening. My name is Tristan Stutler, and I am a proud graduate of Lewisville High School, class of 2024. I am nineteen years old. I am currently pursuing a Bachelor's of Science of Nursing degree at Altman College with a goal of earning my master's degree in Family Nurse Practitioner from the Ohio State University. Healthcare has always been my calling, and I want to use that background to continue serving others and giving back to the community that has given so much to me. During my time as a student here at Lewisville, I was deeply involved in both academics and service. I served as the president of the National Honor Society, a leopard mentor, a member of the Pride of Lewisville Marching Band, an Eagle Scout, and most importantly, the student representative to the Board of Education. Beyond school, I am very active in my faith community. I serve as the youngest member of the St. Louis Parish Council. I am also a Eucharistic minister, a Sunday School teacher, a lecturer, and a part-time employee. Faith and service are a big part of who I am. I have been given a strong sense of compassion and responsibility for others. I am running for the Board of Education because I want to give back to the district that has given so much to me. As someone who has sat in these classrooms not very long ago, I understand what our students need today and what will prepare them for the future. I bring fresh ideas, transparency, and a student-first mindset to every decision, ensuring that Lewisville continues to be a place where every student can learn, lead, and succeed. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Dr. Mike Thomas. I left Lewisville High School in eighty-four, went to Notre Dame for four years, got my pre-med degree, and then went to Ohio State and got my doctorate in ninety-two. Some things that I think recommend me for being a good school board member, I've been the treasurer for the County Dental Society for over thirty years and had a real successful run at it. I'm the only dentist in the state of Ohio that's won the Ohio Dental Association annual award three times of all the dentists in the state for different things we've done in our component society. I'm very active at St. Louis Church. I've been on the finance committee for about twenty years now, and we've stayed in business, and we've done a lot of nice things, and one of our crowning accomplishments was the nice parking lot that's there now. I also spent twenty years as a board of director at Stark State College, culminating in the last three years as chairman of the board at Stark State. I left that position to join the Lewisville School Board a few years ago, and then left the school board and put some time into the two scoreboards that are at the... one at the basketball arena, one at the football arena, starting the wooden leopard and all that goes along with it downtown. Starting Second Fridays and seeing that through for the past four years. And something I thought was very important, I worked with Rob Johnson, and we do the Spotlight together, and I thought when the Herald closed, I thought that was something our community needed so we could communicate with each other. And pretty much my goal on the school board is, I'll give you a... I get asked to speak. Okay, I'll talk to you later.
Okay, we're ready for our first question. Mr. Beatty. The most recent state budget has made significant changes to the financial resources available for public schools. What approaches would you consider to maintain quality education in light of both state and federal funding challenges?
Thank you. I just asked the same question the other night at our levy meeting that Mr. Nottingham. As we sit here today, local levies are gonna be reduced or eliminated, and we must act now to protect our teachers, programs, and our student learning. You know, our priorities have to be our teachers and our essential student services. We gotta find new ways of savings, and I guess the six examples I have is, we examine all of our expenses, wasteful or low-impact cost, you know, and make sure we're using our money properly. Protect the classroom first, cut administrative and nonessential costs for students, pursue grants and partnerships, and actually look maybe with the city, with the mayor and council, about eliminating the unfair double tax.
Sorry.
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Chrislip, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
The most recent state budget has made significant changes to the financial resources available for public schools. What approaches would you consider to maintain quality education in light of both state and federal funding challenges?
Well, we don't know which way they're gonna go. It's unfortunate, so we gotta be careful with our funds. And you say, cutting funds, we can't cut funds. Our funds are for our students, and you know, we're at the limit right now. We need to maintain what we give our students right now. We have the best students in the state that work hard, and when we start cutting funds, because the state cuts funds, the federal government cuts funds, we're in trouble. And this levy we have right now is for our students, period. And when we start cutting funds, our students are not gonna be able to compete with the North Cantons and the Jacksons. So this is a shout-out to our levy, and it's a shout-out for people to get out and vote because we need to maintain our students to get everything possible. Thank you.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good. Thank you. So I think, you know, to Mr. Chrislip's point, that, you know, we don't know which way it's gonna go. I think there's probably sixteen bills in the House right now that could either pass or fail, so we can't really control what kind of funding we're gonna get. And it's the same thing in business. You can't control the kind of sales you're gonna get, but what you can control is how you cut costs. And I've always thought the easiest approach to cut costs is take everything that's essential and put it into a bucket. So that would be anyone that has an impact with students to preserve that education. And then as you're working your way down, you go through a second round of stuff you must have by law or stuff that you need to run. And then when you get to that third layer there, you should have, you know, figure out what your delta is and start picking essential pieces to put into that bucket, so you can kind of go through, and you already secured two rounds of stuff you need, and then you kind of start working it from that way. A lot of people will, you know, take approach, well, we're gonna cut this, we're gonna cut that, but I think you need to focus on what you need first and second, and then hopefully you can kind of, you know, not impact the students and make those cuts at the end to get within your budget.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
All right, so I take the approach from a business perspective. I look at...
I look at certified licensed teachers as the number-one importance to our schools. They are direct labor to our students. If the teachers and students don't show up, no one has a job. Not a cafeteria worker, not a superintendent, not an A.D., no one. So the number-one important in the process is student-teacher, period. The second is indirect labor. That is the classified personnel that support all the teachers and the students. That's the people that cook, mow yards, so they are number two. Overhead is actually our supervisory personnel. They are administrative. So our administrative should be making everybody work much easier because if they don't have the students and the teachers, they don't have a salary. With that being said, I would challenge the superintendent to use her authority to reorganize administration and supervisory staff. She really doesn't have the authority to reorg teachers. She has a responsibility to do what's best to our school district. So in order to move teachers, our board has to approve that. I won't be approving that. I'll be going after administration and top-down. Thank you.
Dr. Ramsey Lamro.
So, yes, there's a lot going on at the state level right now. There are 607 public school districts in Ohio, so we'll all be affected. So whatever the state legislature decides, 607 school districts are going to be in the same boat, per se. So we all have the same options. We all have more property tax levies. They'll probably look different because there's some of them that are going away, like our five-year emergency levy that we have in this school district right now. So we are left with maybe traditional property tax levies, income tax, and obviously, we can always look to cut. But we are 28th lowest. We are 28 from the bottom of the revenue spent per pupil in Ohio. There's not much more to cut. Thank you.
Mr. Stutler?
I'm good, thank you. The recent state budget has created new challenges for a lot of Ohio schools, and Louisville is not immune. I believe that we can maintain the high-quality education we have at Louisville here by focusing on smart, long-term planning and protecting what truly matters most, which is student learning. That means prioritizing programs that have direct impacts on students, like career pathways, academic support, and technology readiness. At the same time, we need to regularly review spending and make sure that every dollar is used effectively and not maintained out of habit. It is also important to look for creative partnerships, whether it's with a local business, through grants, or organizations to help expand opportunities without overburdening the taxpayers. Collaboration between boards, staff, and the community is truly key. By being transparent, proactive, and resourceful, we can adopt funding changes while continuing to give students the education they deserve.
Dr. Thomas?
Well, I agree with everything Brenda said, and I think Tristan's on to something as well. My two cents beyond what's already been said is, I would try to increase revenue generated by revenue generating sports, basketball, and football so that we could have the athletic fund be as self-sustaining as possible so we wouldn't need to use money from the general fund that helps us to hire, like, teachers aides and different auxiliary people that help in the classroom and have money available for that versus using it to fund non-revenue sports, which are very important for the children to play. Right? And so, but in regard to what Tristan said, I think I've shown that I've done that with the football and basketball scoreboard. I brought private money into the schools to support what we're trying to do for our students.
I'd remind you, if you have a question that you'd like to ask the panel, just raise it, and we have volunteers that'll come around and pick them up for you. Second question. This goes to Mr. Chrislip. What is an example of how the district maintains or could maintain ongoing fiscal transparency with our community at large?
Well, when you look at transparency, and I stated a little bit in my opening remarks, the doors are always open. It's public knowledge. You can walk in anytime. But there are certain things that's not allowed. Executive session is closed, and that is state law, Revise Code 221. You cannot let that stuff out, and I see why. For the past eight years, I've learned a lot, and I know I still have a lot to learn. I work with a lot of great people, and I have never seen them turn anybody away. They're very open, and they always do what's right for students. I've seen that time and time again, and that is going to continue, I'm sure of it. So you talk about transparency, we have transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Desiato?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's very difficult if you pull down like the CUP report from the state of Ohio, and you have to sort it, it's a big Excel file. And when you start to, you know, I separate it a lot by county, and you realize that, like, Canton McKinley Alliance, they get almost double from the state than what we get. And I'm sure a lot of people did not know that. I think Derek does a very nice job putting together a nice presentation on the school website each month, but for the non-accounting people in the room, it can be very difficult to interpret and understand what's going on there. Fortunately for me, every single month probably for the last 15 years, I've had to present financial statements to non-accounting people, non-finance people. So I think that's one of the areas I could really help with, is the reporting at a high level and a summary level to make it easier for people to understand. Thank you.
Mr. Lab?
Yeah, I would televise every board meeting moving forward. That just eliminates any transparency issues. I would also eliminate any board outside, any board meeting outside our school district. It's actually against Sunshine laws to have board meetings outside our school district. If there's people with disabilities, it's a disadvantage for someone to get in their car and have to drive to RG Drag to go to a board meeting. So I'll eliminate any board meetings at RG Drag, or at least recommend that because it's going against Sunshine laws. Also, I would also ask them to post annual revenues and expenditures. I would ask to post ending fund balances, and I would also ask him to post carryover amounts for all major and minor funds moving forward. Thank you.
Dr. Ramsey Lamro.
Well, this is a continuing problem, getting information out to the whole community, especially around levy time. We feel that void with Louisville Herald gone, especially to non-parents right now, non-current parents of schoolchildren. We do have a very good school website. The Five-Year Forecast is up there with the associated notes that Mr. Nottingham does. Even the one that we just voted on Friday morning is already on the website. That's there for your viewing pleasure. It is hard to understand, as Mr. Desiato said, but it is there. Mr. Nottingham's office is always open. We also have Q&amp;A sessions for around our levy, so town hall meetings like this. We also have the PAWS newspaper that we constantly put financial information in.
Thank you. Mr. Stutler?
Louisville has already taken strong steps towards fiscal transparency by posting the budgets and auditing reports online, as Mr. Desiato said. So our community members can easily access where the funds are going. As a board member, I'd like to build upon that by making it more easy to understand. You know, I have two medical people next to me. We call that layman's terms. So we need to share it regularly through a board meeting and updates. So people shouldn't have to dig to really find the answers that they're looking for. They should be able to trust that their tax dollars are being used responsibly and effectively for the students. Thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
I really don't think there's a problem with the fiscal transparency of the schools whatsoever. I think like Dr. Ramsey says, it's all right there, and we're very blessed in our community to have Derek Nottingham. We're very blessed. He's on top of a guy. He's accessible. Anyone can call him and meet with him and answer a question. I don't think we have a transparency problem financially with the school district funds.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes, I absolutely think we do have a transparency problem. I think we need a monthly financial post after every board meeting that an individual, I guess, in layman's term can understand. I think we need a searchable per-dollar spending list of date, vendor, reason, and amount for every dollar that comes in and out of this school district. I've looked up many other school districts, and this happens all the time. Just an example I do have here, from our June 23, 2025 meeting, we get the notes, and it says, "Transfer $1 million from general fund to termination benefits." I'm not real sure what a million dollars and where that's going, and that's, you know, something I think we need to be aware of. And hopefully, you know, when you see something like that, a million dollars being transferred into a different fund, where is that money going to? So yes, I think we need to be transparent, for sure. And sort of, you know, we went off there, transparency, trying to get, you know, public record requests. From my standard and what I've been through, it is very, very tough to get an answer from this board.
Go ahead and start. I'm going to ask a favor. I have lists so that I don't miss anyone or get anyone out of turn, but I was going to use a pen to mark my way, and I left it out on the table. Mine's a terrible thing to lose. Yeah. Oh, she went to get it. It's okay. Thank you very much.
You might not get it back. I don't have to worry.
Thanks. Mr. Desiato?
I think it's Mr. Chrislip's turn.
No, I went.
No, he went.
Oh, did, okay, I'm sorry.
Confusing me.
I'm sorry. That's why I needed the pen.
We're going to take our first question from the audience. How do you feel about book banning in the schools?
I think there's, you know, two schools of thought on that. One, there's an appropriate level of literature that students should be reading. You know, we rate movies rated R, rated PG. So obviously, I think that that is not what we're talking about. We're talking about banning books. I think we're talking about books that might have a certain ideology one way or another. And I really think that, you know, there should be a set standard of these books are acceptable and these books aren't acceptable. I think over the last couple of years, people kind of got carried away on both sides, you know, getting carried away of what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I think if there is a question, it should be posed at a school board meeting to say, hey, these are the books we're, you know, considering banning, or these are the books we're considering unbanning. And it should be open to the public to come to a consensus and decide what they want to do. Thank you.
Mr. Lab?
I agree with Anthony. It should be, the public should be involved, and I'll be honest, I remember my dad telling me stories of Andy Aljansik as part of the board, looking at the books to determine what our students are going to read and learn, and it was a part of the process for the community. And I think we lost our way with some of that stuff. So I'd like to get back to that. I know there's all kinds of policies that allows our community to get involved, get heavy in the weeds. We can get everyone involved in this community. We don't have to leave you out. There's all kinds of policies that dictate that. So I think our community does need to be involved and decide what should be in our schools and not in our schools.
Dr. Ramsey Lamro.
I have the trust in our administration and our teachers to make recommendations as to what our students should be learning, should be reading, should have in their curriculum. I do agree that, yeah, if there's going to be something as staunch as a book ban, I kind of want to know why. And we will put it out to the board and then the public if that's warranted. But I have the trust in the people that we put in place in our administration and our teachers to kind of be the grassroots at those kind of decisions.
Mr. Stutler?
Yes. Book banning has become a very big issue in our very divided political climate. One of my teachers at Louisville, I believe, had a poster on her wall that said, "All the books that had been banned." It should be really the teachers and the administrators who are involved in the discussion of what should be banned and not banned, you know? Going to the library, there should be no reason that a middle schooler should be finding sexually explicit content in the library, but they should be able to go find George Orwell's 1984. So it's a little bit of good and bad. We need to figure out what is best for our students to be learning, and the parents should also definitely be involved in that discussion, too, because at the end of the day, they know what they want for their kids, and that is what it's all about. So thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
I can't add anything more than what's already been said, but if a certain book did come up that was controversial and the parents brought it to the school board, I think having a nice discussion about the merits of the book would be appropriate.
Yes, I agree with everything, you know, everyone's said so far. You know, as long as we're following the mandates we have in place now, you know, if this issue comes up, I think it has to go to the community. We need to hear from, you know, all of you out there, and then the board makes the decision from there.
Mr. Chrislip?
Perennial guidance is so important that we get our parents involved. They should be big decision-makers when it comes to books, along with school boards, along with superintendents, administrators. It's not a one-man show. And believe me, when you start banning books, and you start banning magazines, and you start banning material that should be read, then what do we have? We're doing things, and we're taking away our First Amendment right. So I am not in favor personally. Thank you.
Mr. Lab? How will you improve communication to parents and the community, both for general information and during emergencies?
I think we can create a standard communication process. If we have a policy already in place, then we need to review that policy for communication. And if we don't, we need to create one so it's standard through every school district. And I've already looked into creating certain documents that keep us out of risk from a school district perspective. There's a lot of information we can give to our community without being in legal risk. So I think we owe it to our community to provide every ounce of information on every event that happens within our school to alleviate any worrying stress or risk to our community. So I think we can create a standard format for communication with high details.
Dr. Ramsey Lamro?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. How will you improve communication to parents and the community, both for general information and during emergencies?
This is a constant issue, and I think we've become very, very much improved as we go on through this with all the communication channels that are changing through social media and Parents Square and All Calls and things like that. But I think even each scenario is different. There are people involved on both sides. I mean, it's one thing if it's an emergency, yeah, the All Call goes out, goes out on social media, just like we had a lockdown last week. We gave all the information we could to all the parents at each step of the way. I think that was gold standard for that kind of emergency situation. But each one is different, and we put the trust in our PR director and our superintendent to know when and what information can be said.
Mr. Stutler?
Could you repeat the question, please?
How will you improve communication to parents and the community, both for general information and during emergencies?
Yeah. So unfortunately, last week, we did have an incident at the high school. There is a threat, and our school went into a lockdown, and an All Call went out. But during that, there are still some people who did not receive the message and were kind of left in the dark. I think the unfortunate fact is that rumors and things of that sort... I think the unfortunate fact is that rumors and things of that sort spread very fast over the internet, and it's something we really need to fix. We need to be able to find the facts and figure out what is right and what is wrong. And I think we can kind of work towards doing that better and making sure that every parent gets to know what is going on. It's really important for everybody to know what's going on, so we all get the big picture. So we don't want anybody to be left in the dark during bad situations like the lockdown or anything worse, God forbid. So thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
One of the things that I alluded to in my original presentation, I've been working on over the past two years, starting the Spotlight Network, not only for the schools, but for our community in general. It's only information about Lewisville and Natchitocheship. We have two weekly 10-minute broadcasts with students involved in the production and the entire broadcast. And it's good for the city and the Y and the library and the schools to promote what is going on. And hopefully, more people will start to tune into the Spotlight and realize that it's an electronic version of the Herald. And that's what I'm working on as one of my sidebar projects currently.
Mr. Beatty?
I think it starts with honest, truthful information. Let me repeat myself. Honest, truthful information needs to be put out there, and all incidents need to be reported. Just last week, we had an individual in this building who had a pocket knife and was threatening students. No information was released on that. We need to be informed so that the rumors stop. And then we need to give follow-ups, honest follow-ups, that we know what's going on. Because unfortunately, we pick and choose what we want to put out there, and it has to be honest and truthful when it is.
Mr. Chris Lipp?
I'm sure you're aware, in the past few weeks, we've had a couple incidents that took place, unfortunately. It's kind of scary. But our team, I would give five stars, the way it was handled professionally. And thank God, nobody got hurt. And the people involved that were reprimanded, let go. And we learned a lesson, and we will get better. We're only human. Things happen. And we will get better and better. Thank you.
Mr. Desiato?
So I think, you know, we do a pretty good job as a community of getting the communication out to a certain point. I think like part of the frustration is, you know, I had three kids in three different schools. They all had three different experiences the day we had the lockdown. And we heard rumors that, okay, there was a swatting attempt, but a lot of us really don't know what that entitles. Did the police investigate it? Did they catch anybody? And I think it's the, you know, corrective action moving forward of what, in a follow-up of what they did, that the community really feels like they don't, they're not being told the whole entire story. You know, the other incident is on the bus incident. We heard, okay, that there was an incident, everyone's getting retraining, and that was the last communication we had. But what was the corrective action moving forward? Is that bus driver still driving? I have, I really have no idea. And I have a Nissan on one of the buses that the person was supposedly driving. So that concerns me, and I'm sure it concerns a lot of you as well.
Dr. Ramsey Lamorot? We have an active school levy campaign running. How are you or are you actively involved?
Absolutely. That's one of the board members' main duties, is to keep the school funded for all the things that we want for our kids to be involved in, to learn, to have programs available. Absolutely. I've been terribly involved in all the levy campaigns about every two years for the past 13 years. We've done a great job at keeping fixed levy, tax levies, fixed money tax levies. So we're not increasing anybody's taxes. Nobody gets an increase in tax. We're still collecting the same $2.562 million for this current levy that we're asking the substitute for. I've been very much involved, and I'm, along with my fellow board members, have been the only ones that have been involved thus far in this, in this, with some help from the community members. So I'm thankful for that.
Mr. Stutler?
I am involved. I have a levy sign in my yard, and I am very much in support of the levy, and I'm going to tell you why. I was on the school board in 2023 when the levy was up. I helped work through the process, working with the board members, all current board members, on working towards passing the levy. In 2021, when the levy failed to pass, I was a student at Lewisville. I was starting up my freshman year of high school. It was also during COVID. I lost busing. I live across the street, about half a mile off of Edmar. And let me tell you, during the winter time, you know, it was pretty much a pretty big challenge to get across nickel plate there. I don't know if you've gone there during school hours, but it's almost like you're playing a game of Frogger because you can't get across there. So all could have been prevented if the levy was passed. You know, we're putting students' lives at risk in these kind of situations when these kids have to walk to school. So thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
I support the passage of the levy as well actively. And a few years ago, when we passed our major levy, Steve Coon and I put up a huge banner at the Wooden Leopard at our own expense, promoting passage of the levy, and I think it was a great help in passing that levy.
Mr. Beatty?
Yep, with this upcoming levy, in the past, Rick and I went out and we put up all the signs in 2023. I was very active in supporting that levy. As I sit here today, I can honestly say that I am not completely satisfied with the way our board has handled our financial situation. Our administrators are continually getting raises, while our teachers are working without a contract. What, you know, what type of action have we taken to cut costs in different situations? And I know they clearly say, you know, they, running, but I guess until I see the financial papers in front of me and actually have a understanding, right now, at this point, I do not support the levy.
Mr. Chris Lipp?
Until our state legislators get their act together, we don't have any choice. We have to rely on our taxpayers. And they've done a great job funding our schools for our kids. I will always support a school levy. That's our future. And unfortunately, if people don't believe that, try to sell your house if the levies don't pass, because you're going to lose a lot of value. And I am not threatening anybody. I don't believe that. We need to come together and do what's right for our kids, again, so they can compete with other schools, so we can put them in a position to do their college work. And if not, they can do their job in the trades. It costs money to go to RG Drag. It costs money to do the right things as far as going somewhere else. Thank you.
Mr. Desiato?
Yeah, I support the levy. I think it's one of the few taxes I actually don't mind paying. And I've always supported it from the time I didn't have any kids, and I'll support it to the day I die. Because those are the only tax dollars you actually spend that stay in your community, besides your city taxes. So, you know, you think about your federal government, you're paying 25% to the federal government, plus Social Security and Medicare. This is one of the few taxes you pay that actually stays in the community. And it's very difficult from a school perspective, because we don't know what future funding is going to be like. And you can't go out and create more revenue. You can't go out and increase your sales because the students aren't products. You know, it's very difficult to manage a budget and have expenses. And kind of, what's coming down the pipeline is you don't know what kind of revenue you're going to have in the future. So I understand the teachers don't have a contract, and I think that's very frustrating. But at the same time, we don't know, is this levy going to pass or what's going to happen? If you think about all the new builds in the city, you know, we have additional students coming in, but not additional revenues. So our revenue per student will drop if this levy doesn't pass.
Mr. Lab?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. We have an active school levy campaign running. How are you or are you actively involved?
All right, so how I've been actively involved in the past and in the present is I voted for every school board member currently sitting on the board, and I voted for every levy since I've lived in this community, every one, sometimes blindly to my own fault. I was also involved in strategic planning. I got invited a few years ago, but for some reason, I got off the invite list this year. So I would never eliminate the community from having discussions. I would send out a community survey and ask everyone in this community if they want to be involved, or at least send a survey out to get them involved. I will say one thing, I'm not satisfied with transparency or accountability. And one thing I would like to say is they did create a revenue. They created it out of the thin air, and one way they created revenue was pay-to-play. And that's making about $180,000 a year. So pay-to-play is a revenue generator. Thank you.
Mr. Stutler? With the federal defunding of local programs such as meals, how will Lewisville schools ensure kids and these families get the help and nutrition that they deserve?
Great question. We have a lot of great staff here at the, at all levels at the district. I had the great privilege of knowing many of them. Many of them are also bus drivers that I got to know very well. You know, when kids come to school, it is the most important thing, other than learning, that they get fed. You know, nutrition is the most important part of our bodies. So when we get cuts from the government, it makes it very hard for the ability for our district to help get the food out to the kids. And even then, we lose staff, especially if we lose this levy here. We might have to lose more staff, which means less busing and less kitchen staff. Thank you.
Dr. Thomas?
The school works very hard to provide wraparound services to those in need at Lewisville. And that is not only breakfasts, but it's also during the summer for those desperately in need of nutrition. And I think we do a very nice job supporting those in our community already. Now, if we find out that a need is not being met, we'll work to meet it.
Mr. Beatty?
Yeah, if this, if food is cut from our children, I think our community will rally and support our children. I think we come together as a family, and we'll take care of one another. So I think that's, you know, an issue. If it comes to that, we would have to rally and get support from community members to make sure they're fed year-round. And, you know, like Dr. Mike just said, you know, during the summer, that's a huge part of it. You know, there's a lot of individual students that, you know, don't have the means like a lot of us do. So I would hope we would rally together as a community and make sure the kids are fed and taken care of.
Mr. Chris Lipp?
Unfortunately, a lot of us don't realize that we have kids out there that aren't getting fed. And thank God for the Backpack Program and other programs, the CEP program, where kids are provided breakfast and lunch, because kids are hungry. Mom's working, Dad's working, and there's no food at home. So thank God for Lewisville that takes care of these kids and takes care of some families, and we need to continue that.
Mr. Desiato?
Yeah, it's a very unfortunate thing to, you know, sit up here and have to talk about, but it is reality for a lot of families. And I think that, you know, it's very difficult to determine, you know, if the federal funding is cut, how we're going to cover that shortfall. So I think like Doc Thomas and Brian said, is right. The community will rally around. But we have to make sure we get that communication out to the community that, hey, if you need help, here's where you go to get it. And that, hey, these people do need help, not, obviously not identifying them specifically, but, hey, we need to get a food bank going or partner with a local food pantry to cover that shortfall. But I think what, like I said, what Doc Thomas said and what Brian said are right. The community will rally around the kids.
Mr. Lab?
Like I said previously, classified personnel, which is food service workers, they are our number-two responsibility in our schools, excuse me, as importance. They support the staff that keeps the schools running. So quite frankly, I don't want to touch any of that staff. According to the contract for the board and superintendent, it's actually the responsibility to do what's best in our school district. And I would say touching anything that has to do with food service or food for our children would be off the table. So I don't even think that's relative, because the contract says it's our responsibility to do what's best for our kids. And to me, that's off the table. I'd rather look at cuts from another angle than cutting any kind with food service.
Dr. Ramsey Lamorot?
Can you please repeat the question?
With the federal defunding of local programs such as meals, how will Lewisville schools ensure kids and these families get the help and nutrition they deserve?
Okay, well, yes, it is, it is a big problem. Mr. Chris Lipp mentioned wraparound services, which is very important. The care team that we have in our buildings right now, we have a Backpack and a Full Belly program, which garners donations from the members of the community, businesses and things like that, to make sure that kids are fed. Like Mr. Chris Lipp also mentioned, the CEP program, which is Community Eligibility Plan, that's a state-funded program currently. We've had it for the last two years, and it gives our kids free breakfast and lunches for the last two years, which is, has been quite, quite helpful. And that's, that's up to our administration, our district treasurer, to figure out those ways. But we have a great community that continues to help our kids to make sure that they're fed.
Dr. Thomas? How will you address issues related to bullying? Bullying, sorry.
Well, I think that if all the children have a place where they feel comfortable, and I'm all in favor of these different student groups. Like when I was on the board, we started the bowling team. And I think if every child at this high school and down further on in the grades feels as though they fit in with a group, either, you know, athletics, the band, speech, the arts, academics, if they're in a group, they'll be less likely to be bullied than if they're lone wolves. And so I would encourage as many special interest groups at the schools to exist, because I think in that friendship, it lessens the likelihood of bullying to occur.
Thank you. Mr. Beatty?
If you look at our board's website, we don't have a bowling problem here at Lewisville. We've only had seven in the last 11 years, which is really amazing. But we all know that's not factual. We need to stand up for our children. And when they have a problem or a concern, or they're being bullied by an individual on the bus, or they're being bullied by an administrator, that we step up. You write an instant report, and you take care of that child. There is bullying going on on all ends in this school district, from student to student, from administration to student, from administration to parents. So I say, and when people ask me, make sure you fill out an instant report, and from there, go to your local police if it's bad enough, because we need to keep our board and our administrators accountable for what's going on in our school buildings.
Mr. Chris Lipp?
It's unfortunate, because I strongly believe things like suicide are directly related to bullying. So it's, it just becomes so many problems for everybody, and it definitely needs reported and dealt with very, very strongly. So therefore, if you see something, report it. And our kids definitely need to be notified of that day after day, because, you know, they think, well, it's really not going to happen to me. I don't need to get involved. Get involved. You see it, report it.
Mr. Desiato?
Yeah, I agree with what Brian said. You know, it is odd that we only have had, what did you say? I think you said seven incidents over the last 11 years. I think it also, you know, what is the definition of bullying? If two people get in a scuffle, is that a bowling event, or is that just a fight? If, if two people get in a scuffle, is that a bowling event, or is that just a, a fight? But I know, to me, bullying is a repeated behavior where you're continually picking on a student. And I know a couple of my son's friends, this past year, I coached their Little Leopard team, we, we struggled. We were not a very good football team our first year out, and they got made fun of and picked on. Not, not physically, but they didn't want to go to school. They were, they were upset on Mondays, because they didn't want to go to school and get made fun of. So bullying is physical as well as, you know, verbal, and I think that Mr. Norris did a great job once he was made aware of the situation, but I think it's very, very difficult to get a fourth grader to come up to you and say, hey, I'm being picked on, or I don't want to go to school. I know, I talked to one's mom, and it, it took her like a day and a half to figure out why I didn't go to school. So I, I think it's a very, very serious issue, but I also think it, it's something that gets thrown around a lot, and it's not the easiest thing to resolve.
Mr. Lab.
So I definitely think bullying's an issue. I trended out the data from the public records. So the first four years from 2016 to 2019, there's a total of eight bullying incidents, which represents two, on average, two students per year, or .07%. During the evaluation gap, the accountability gap, it dropped to three over the next five years, which dropped it then to .67 students, average students per year, and .02% percentage for students bullied per year. It's statistically impossible to have a half a student be bullied a year. It's statistically impossible. So I'd like to know how we got to that number, and if it's truthful, then we need a pilot program, and I'm gonna ask the new governor to come and pilot this program, because we've literally eliminated bullying from our school district.
Dr. Ramsey Lamaro.
Bullying continues to be a problem. We know bullying incidents are under-reported, because, guess what? They're scared of being bullied even more if they report them. That's a problem. Social media is a problem. Kids texting and TikTok and all the things are a problem. Another problem is beyond that, a lot of this bullying is going on outside of school hours, outside of school grounds. So what is our jurisdiction over that? It's not happening here. What is our jurisdiction? How do we get involved? How do we discipline that, when it's not happening as, as a part of school? But I do agree with Dr. Thomas that, that's why we are garnering more programs like esports and bowling and lacrosse and things like that, to get more kids involved, so that there is less likelihood of, of bullying.
Mr. Stutler.
Bullying is just an unfortunate reality of schooling today. I do think that our district does a great job of helping prevent that. We have what we call a Hope Squad at the high school. I don't know if it's at all levels, and the Upstandard Program, where it helps bring kids together and allows kids to talk. You know, Louisville has a great culture, and it always has had a great culture. But let me tell you, when I, I graduated two years ago, and I still do not fully know how I should have reported an incident while I was at the high school, you know, other than going up to a teacher and asking them. And sometimes, if I may have saw something, you know, I may not have felt comfortable talking to a teacher about it. So I think it might be pretty important to have an, maybe an anonymous outside source that could come in and look at it on a outside, outside way, instead of having, you know, the superintendent or the board look at it. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for Ms... Mr. Beatty. In an era of political influence on our curriculum, where should school board members seek guidance on how to lead our district academically?
I think, first of all, we gotta follow all the mandates that are in, in place at this time, and make sure we follow everything correctly. And from there, I think we reach out, you know, once again, to the community and get their advice and how, you know, what we teach, how we teach, you know, and different things. I know there's a lot of different people out there on both sides that want this and want that, but I think the, the biggest thing, we gotta listen to our community and what they want done. But we need to follow the mandates that are in place now, and then continue seeking advice from our community.
Mr. Chrislip.
Will you repeat the question, please?
Yes. In an era of political influence on curriculum, where should school board members seek guidance on how to lead our district academically?
First of all, we have opportunities to go to the state and actually get schooled, and they have different programs where we can learn. So we're, we're learning every day on different types of programs that we can take back home and actually put our students involved of the curriculum, and we have a superintendent that does a nice job putting people in place, and we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get it done. Thank you.
Mr. Desiato.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question fully, but I think a lot of it has to do with what we probably see on the news and, and in the national media, where teachers are influencing, influencing students one way or another. As far as I know, that's not being done here at Louisville, that we're pushing either left agendas or right agendas on students. But I think if that was happening, I think you would be able to come to a board meeting, no matter who the board is, and they, they would put an end to it. I think that, you know, we're, we live in a, in a pretty good community where everyone gets along. I know people all vote differently, but I really don't see us having that type of issue that we see on CNN or Fox News, where a school's going one way or another.
Mr. Lab.
Can you please repeat the question?
Yes. In an era of political influence on curriculum, where should school board members seek guidance on how to lead our district academically?
Well, I think we should start in the policy manual. I just reviewed the policy manual over the last four months. I've read over 300 policies. There's over 400 policies in our manual, and over 300 are a decade old. That's a shock to me, that we have decade-old policies, we're trying to run our schools, and we have AI in our schools. So we are way behind, so we need to literally review every policy, update it, work with the state. I mean, how are we running our schools on decade-old policies from 2016? So my job is to start researching programs, any curriculum ideas or potential ideas to go with the current policies we have. But I think we need to really look at our current policies and either update them, get rid of them, or change them. We have the power to do that here. We can do whatever we want with our policies, just as long as it's within legal right or law.
Dr. Ramsey Lamaro.
Plenty of curriculum decisions, I believe, need to come through the Assistant Superintendent, who is also our curriculum director. She maintains a good rapport with the county and the state assistant superintendents that control curriculum. However, something that's local to Louisville needs to have board input as far as how conservative or how, how liberal something needs to be. There are a lot of things that go on in Oregon and Washington as far as how they teach kids that, that, let's hope it'll be a long time before it ever gets here, if, if ever, and, and it's our job on the board to make sure that, that those opinions are heard.
Mr. Stutler.
I mentioned before, we have a great culture here at Louisville. A lot of our teachers here, this is something I just learned very recently, a lot of our teachers here are Louisville graduates themselves. They know the culture of Louisville better than anybody else. I see a lot of teachers here, past and current teachers, you know, they are the people that we should be looking for and talking to, you know? They know what it is like to be a teacher here at Louisville. They know it better than anybody. They know it better than the governor or whoever sets state policies, you know? I think what is really important is to get the community involved as well. Like this forum that we're having here tonight, I think it would be a great idea, if this ever came about, that we have, invite all the community members, teachers, whoever, can all come and bring their own ideas about the culture at Louisville, because, like I said, we have such a great culture here. Thank you.
Dr. Thomas.
I think the idea of having the school board elected by the citizens, it's automatic that the board represents the view of the majority of the citizens, and they present what they want. And I, as a school board member, what my goal would be, would be to prepare these students for whatever they wanted to do in life, whether it be something in the trades, or something that requires a four-year degree or a certificate, and prepare them well for that. That's what we're here for. And a second thing that I'd like to accomplish is having the students have a genuine love of Louisville. So when we did produce these all-star kids, they would want to come back to our community and, and live and raise a family here.
Thank you. Yeah, one more question. Okay. There's been some wonderful questions tonight, and some of you were very prolific, and I'm not gonna be able to get through all of them. We have time for one more question, and then the candidates will do their closing. So, Mr. Chrislip, how will you improve the process of contract negotiations? I'm sorry. How will you improve the relation, no, how will you improve the process of contract negotiations?
We have a team of administrators and our treasurer that negotiate the contract. Four members are not allowed or involved in the contract. So we rely on them to do the job, which we're hoping we can get that done as soon as possible, and it'd be really a nice surprise if that happens in the real near future. So we are basically off limits when it comes to negotiating, negotiating the contract as a board member. Thank you.
Mr. Desiato.
I've never negotiated a school contract before, but I've, I've worked at several companies that had unions, and it, it's always been smoother when the union members have trust in, in the administration and the leadership in this case, or upper management. I think that that goes a long way in negotiating any contracts. I think that if you have members on either side that people don't trust, or they feel are being deceitful, it makes it very, very difficult to get a, a contract negotiated. So I think when you start off the negotiations, you need to pick your best people on both sides that are the most trusted to be a part of that team to get that done, and I think that'll go a long way versus having a diverse situation like we had several years ago. Contract negotiations is tough. It's, it's something every HR manager I've ever worked with stresses over, but I think if you have a good team in place of, of leadership on both sides, it'll go a lot smoother.
Mr. Lab.
I've sat down in front of hundreds of people and given reviews, discipline, I fired people, and the best way to have a conversation is look them in the eyes and be honest with them. So we need our superintendent to sit down in front of the teachers, look them in the eyes, and be honest with them, and have a very difficult conversations with them. And that's how you, that's how you move forward in life. You don't, you don't shy away and say, we can't do this. We need to sit down, get in a room, shut the doors, and have it out, and then move forward. And that's what you do in life, that's what you do in business. I've had yelling matches in conference rooms, and then I'm backslapping the person three hours later, drinking a beer with them, because you had difficult situations. What God tells you, you go through tribulations and you get better from it. That's what life's all about.
Dr. Ramsey Lamaro.
As of this morning, we have a tentative agreement with our LEA, by the way. That's, that's new. It just needs voted on by the LEA, as well as the Board of Education. That's big. That's, that's awesome. I'm so glad. We have to build trust in this community with our teachers, and that's, that's what we will continue to do. We have a great negotiating team in our administrators. They build trust with their teachers, because that's the contract we're working on now as our certified staff. They know that we're giving them as much as we can within reason. We also have a levy on board. We also have state funding that's being cut. So we all kind of have to be in the same boat together and realize that we're doing what we can, because we all believe that the teachers deserve every penny they get and more.
Mr. Stutler.
Yeah, the, I believe the, the process of negotiating should be truly built on respect, fairness, and open communication. Teachers and staff here at Louisville are the heart of our district, and their success directly impacts our students. As a recent graduate, I had the distinct privilege of knowing many of our educators here at Louisville, something that some of people cannot say. I have seen firsthand the dedication and the care that our teachers put into helping our students succeed. My approach would be to listen carefully to both sides, to understand all of the data, and look for balanced solutions to meet the staff where they are, to make sure that the students are always put at the front of every decision. When everyone is heard and respected, we can create agreements that strengthens our entire district. Thank you.
Dr. Thomas.
I agree with what's been said. Four times during my time as, on the Stark State Board, we negotiated the contract, and it really comes down to the relationship between both sides, built, built on trust and honesty, and that's what it comes down to, and if that is fostered, things will go well.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Desiato. You have one minute to do...
I think you skipped Brian for the last question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Beatty. Even with a pen, I made a mistake.
I hope we do have a contract for our teachers. That'd be great, great news. But I guess, you know, just doing research, I, I look at that we need to do an interest-based bargaining, a collaborative approach that focuses on the underlying needs and interests of both parties, rather than the positions and demands. I would handle bargaining, bargaining and contracts internally. Keep the ESC out, keep other people out, sit down with our people face-to-face. I would voice, I would seek to avoid the breakdowns we experienced under the current superintendent's approach, which contributed to the strike the last time. So hopefully, we do get a contract, and our teachers and support staff is taken care of.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Desiato. You have your minute to do your closing remarks. Sorry, closing remarks. Where would you like to do?
Oh, here's fine. I just want to say thanks to the League of Women Voters of the Canton area for putting this on tonight. I know they put a lot of work into it. You know, it's, it's very tough to corral seven candidates on the same night to get them all here, so I think they did a really great job, and I just wanted to say thank you to them. Thank you for coming tonight, as, as an audience and community members, that, you know, to be informed voters, and to see that you have a, a lot of qualified candidates up here, and you have, you have a tough decision to make. There's eight candidates running for three spots, so five of us are not gonna make it. I will say, I will support whoever wins. My kids are gonna be here, you know, for the foreseeable future. I have no plans on moving. I have nieces and nephews as well in the community. I think when, when you go vote, you have to look at why an individual is running and what, what they stand for. And I think from my perspective, what I really stand for is putting the kids first, not just because I have kids in the classroom, in a, in a different classroom, but because, you know, I, I've dedicated a lot of time to coaching youth, students from kindergarten all the way up to fourth grade, and I think that if we elect people who you believe are gonna put students first and do it in the best interest of the students, that we'll be successful the next four years. Thank you.
Mr. Lab.
If you elect me, I will use decision-making that's value-added for the students and the teacher versus non-value-added. Also, we need to determine if there's accountability gap within our administration. I would like to change the policy owner of the entire manual to the Assistant Superintendent, since she's already well-versed in the policies. This will be a great opportunity for a superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, to prepare for the superintendent role. This responsibility will allow us to assess their competence and effectively managing and overseeing the policy manual. I want to create an anonymous bullying hotline. I don't want to use a national see-something, say-something app. I've asked my daughters, they don't like it. I want to create an independent audit team and reduce overall risk with our policies that are over a decade old. I want to train the seniors how to audit our school policies, and they'll train the juniors, and we'll make an entire class on how to audit, and it'll be a business class, and they'll take that experience on to the next college or their job experience, so they'll walk out of the high school as an auditor. So I'd like to do that. I am a train-the-trainer, trainer with auditing. Thank you.
Dr. Ramsey Lamaro.
I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and for caring so deeply about I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and for caring so deeply about our schools and our community. For the past 13 years, it has been my honor to serve on the Board of Education, always keeping students at the heart of every decision. I am proud of the progress we've made together, but I also know there is more work ahead. With your support, I will continue to serve with fairness, steadiness, and respect and remain committed to building strong schools that help every child thrive. I would be truly grateful for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Stutler.
I want to, first of all, thank the League of Women Voters for putting all this together and all of you watching online or here in person for coming. As a recent graduate, I bring a student's perspective and a community member's heart. I've seen firsthand what makes Louisville so special, dedicated teachers, caring families, and a tradition of excellence that runs truly deep. As someone who has sat in these classrooms not long ago, I understand what our students need today and what will prepare them for the future. I am running to make sure those strengths continue while helping our district grow to meet new challenges. I may be young, but I am deeply committed to listening, learning, and leading with our students' best interests always at the front of my mind. Louisville has shaped who I am and now I want to give back to the community that has given so much to me. Thank you.
Dr. Thomas.
I became a dentist largely because I wanted to call my shot where I came back to live. I love Louisville. I've demonstrated that in plenty of different ways. And you've seen me, I'll work on the 10,000-foot level to do nice things for our district. I'll also work doing things like pulling weeds at North NIM and the things I do regularly, planting trees and doing little leopard broadcasts, helping out where I can as an average Joe. If given the chance, I'll try to do a nice job for you and you'll be proud. Thank you.
Mr. Beatty.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for everyone who came out tonight, League of Women's Voters. I had one closing I was going to read, but there was a question that wasn't asked tonight that was one that was prepared. I am not an angry person, I'm a passionate person. So please, I'm not angry. I love Louisville. I love Louisville School District and I'm passionate. And maybe it comes out that I'm angry and there's sometimes I do, I get angry with the way things are handled. But this question is, how do I describe the culture of Louisville City Schools to a parent? When my wife and Kathy and I moved back from Kentucky with our two bonus daughters, I told her, was 100% confident this was the best place to raise our girls because of the schools. Louisville City Schools has an incredible teaching and support staff who care deeply about students. That said, the district's culture at the top needs reformed. My daughter Samley no longer attends our schools after experiencing bully and policy failures from district leadership and the board. And the way her concerns were handled caused real harm to her mental health. We deserve transparency, integrity, and leaders who will follow policies and put students first. Thank you.
Mr. Chrislip.
I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. This is a pretty special place. It really is. The reason I'm running for board again is because of the students. Our students are unbelievable. The things they have to accomplish, the things they are headed for, there's no place like home. I have a daughter that just, she said, I will never come back home, Dad. Well, guess what? She's back home. Her and her husband, they're back home. The other daughter's up in Cleveland, doing well, but there's no place like Louisville. I don't think you can find a place like Louisville. That's why I'm running, for our kids, our students, a special place. Always remember that. Again, I appreciate you being here. God bless.
Let's have a round of applause for all of these great members. I just have a couple of parting remarks that I want to share. This has been a very informative evening and I know for those of us who don't live in Louisville, it's always interesting to learn more about the communities around Stark County because we do serve a number of them and we get to go all kinds of places. It's great. So thank you for joining us this evening and you have obviously shown your interest in this community and this school. I also want to thank the school for letting us use this wonderful facility. There's a play coming up next week. You should be here. I'm an old theater person, so I always plug plays, right? We also want to thank Ron Johnson for the work that he's been doing back there with our sound and with the video. So that was very helpful to have somebody who's familiar with the school and able to work here so easily. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, we are not, I think I did, we are a nonprofit organization and like all nonprofit organizations, we depend on generous donors like you to help keep our work going. So if you're so inclined, you can go to our webpage, cantonlwv.org. We have a donate button right there. Or there are envelopes outside if you want to just drop a check or if you're just happy to be here, we're happy you're here too. Finally, remind all of your circle of friends and family that early voting has already begun. One of the griefs that I feel at this time of year, at this time of election, when we have school boards and mayors and Plaine Township is doing trustees and, you know, yada, yada. We care about getting people registered, but I care about people getting to the polls to vote. So you can do that now down at the Board of Elections or you can do that on Election Day, but please encourage everyone you know to go cast their ballot. These elections are some of the most important to us because they're our people, they're our community. So it's, you know, people say, oh, it's an off-election. No, it's not an off-election, it's an on-election. So please, 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 go vote and encourage everyone you know to do the same. So again, thank you for being with us this evening. I think it was a really good night.
So that was your Meet the Candidates for the Louisville City Schools School Board, brought to you by the League of Women's Voters of Canton. And I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. It was a special night. I thought a lot of information was put out there for our voters and it allows you the opportunity to see where everyone stands. It was a great time tonight and I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight, both here in the facility and on the air. We had a great time tonight and I truly believe that we are further educated and we'll be looking forward to seeing how everything plays out and for the further information. So again, I want to thank everybody for coming on tonight. And until next time, everybody, we'll see you in a gymnasium, stadium, or event near you. This is Rob Johnson with the Spotlight Media Network. Have a great night, everybody.